All right, we will get started. I think everyone is in or close to it. All right, to recall this meeting of the West House, West Milwaukee School District order, please. Uh Mrs. Klug, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Could do the roll call, please, is that?
Mr. Sickitt.
Present.
Mr. Keller.
Here.
Mrs. Justin. Mr. Eustreck.
Here.
Mr. Schulp.
Present.
Mr. Lee. Do we have Noah?
I'm sure he's in.
Okay.
I've heard that he's not gonna be here.
And Mrs. Kaiser's excused. And Mr. Lee is present.
Here.
Great. And President Emma.
Here. All right, proper notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with open meeting laws of the state of Wisconsin. Uh do we have any additions or modifications to tonight's agenda? I think Superintendent.
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you, Deja. All right, we'll move on to item six this evening, our public comments. If you are here tonight for public comments, if you can please put your name in the chat. So we make sure that we get everybody who wants to speak. We'll wait a second here for everyone to put their names in if they would like to. As a reminder, you have up to three minutes to address board. We will not debate or respond tonight, but rather you'll get a response for our next board meeting. I'll just wait a second here to make sure that anybody who wants to list their name to do public comment has an opportunity to do so. Right, going once. Going twice. All right, we will move on to item seven, our agenda this evening, the superintendent's report. Sure, can I go ahead?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. I am gonna start with the return to school update, so I'm gonna share screen um and go through a few slides. This one will be quite a bit shorter than the ones we've had in recent weeks. Um as we have students back in schools now, um those who have chosen it for distance learning two days per week. Um and it is going very, very well from all accounts so far. It certainly required a lot of flexibility on the part of our teachers and some adaptations on the parts of our families as we've had to move around the schedules a little bit here and there to try to meet the needs of both. Um but so far, so good. It's been wonderful to have our learners back into our spaces and then figuring out good ways to support the families who have continued to choo- to choose virtual instruction. Um so as a reminder, we'll go through our guiding principles. We'll talk about the external health metric update, the internal metric, health metrics, uh the internal active quarantine and monitoring list, and then talk about some next steps. Our guiding principles as normal are safety and wellbeing, learning that works for all, responsiveness and flexibility, and then practicality of implementation. Um and that was a big one for us as we shared last time with the amount of PPE and Plexiglas and all of those pieces that are in buildings now and you can see it very actively being used when you're out and about in schools. Um the external health metrics this week again, uh moved in the right direction for us. Um we want to see those getting lower and lower and lower. Um so at last report on January twenty-sixth, we're still in very high in the Milwaukee County area, but that's trending down or in high in the West Alice, West Milwaukee area, but also trending down. Um the percent positive is trending down in Milwaukee County and the percent positive in our West Alice, West Milwaukee community is also trending down. So those are all really good pieces of news for us. Our internal health metrics, um were the week of January eighteenth, the district case rate and fourteen day average was at point one nine percent. It went down to point one three percent and now it's at for as of February eighth, point one four percent. Um so that also still has us in the green and continuing to move forward with our plan. We had three staff who uh actively had are active cases. They have positive tests and three students. We have twenty-five staff that are in close contact quarantine, four of those were work-related and zero that are in the low-risk or monitoring case cases for staff and for students, a hundred and six that were close contact, thirty-nine that were school-related. Um most of those were in sporting events and activities um and then zero in that low-risk monitoring phase.
Deja, there's the date on that slide was January twenty-second. Can you confirm if that one is actually current?
Um it that should be, I believe the date is incorrect, but I will check that with, double-check that with Marty and send it out because these were the numbers that I saw from our nurses last uh this previous Friday, but I'll double-check that. Um and then we just wanted to share a couple of highlights on some things that are going well. Um the top on the right up here is a picture from an advisory at one of our high schools and um it was in the central celebrations for the week and it was titled reunited. Um and it says Ms. Mansky and her advisory were so happy to be partially back together that they spent the advisory period catching up, sharing highs and lows from their time apart and doing collaborative problem solving to make sure they're ready to handle the new challenges with distance learning. They are excited to be reunited and spend the semester together again. And you can see from the picture that they are spread out awfully far in that space, which is why it's a little hard to see them all in the photo. Um and then this quote at the bottom of this slide is from um one of our employees who um has been a longstanding member of our West Alice, West Milwaukee team and had this to share in an email with Marty and myself at the end of day one. Um she shared, I've always known that I landed in the right profession and a district that was a good fit for me. But today, when kids were back in the building, I was quickly reminded what was missing these past ten months. My horseman family, little voices, smiling eyes, and the collective effort of our horseman community to create a positive experience for all our learners. A four K student even said with delight, I love this place when he came back in. Um so that was an exciting celebration of day one. Um and then one of the things that we ordered, um I put a picture of this and a little note about it in my board update this week as well for our music department were these buckets. Pause that for a second. It's going to be loud, were these buckets so that we could still participate in music and learn rhythm and pattern and drumming and those types of things, even though it's a year when we aren't sharing equipment and we aren't singing out loud in our music classes. So this was the adaptation that our um brilliant music teachers came up with and I was very excited when I could hear it from down the hall as I was working at Madison Elementary to help out there all last week um and ran down to catch some video of the kids participating in their first drumming lesson. Um and the rest of it goes on and on from there. Sorry. Um but it was nice to see the kids engaging in the activities that we really are proud of and that we do at school all the time in a way that just meant something new during this interesting time for us. So we wanted to be sure to share that with everyone. And then the last one is on next steps. So I'll share screen again quickly. Um so far, so good. No quarantine requirements to date, meaning we've been able to keep buildings open due to cases as well as due to staffing. We've been able to staff schools in a way that allowed us to stay open. Um there's updated information on our returning to school website, um which is, there's a link in it to the presentation as well as you can get this right off of our district website. We encourage people to use this um as often as possible. It has all kinds of information on the contact tracing, on the health screener, on wearing face masks, on method of instruction, food program and everything else in there. And then, sorry. Pull the presentation back up. Sorry, having a little technical difficulty there. There we go. Um and then our other next steps are that we have a scheduled plan to review the plan with the board on March eighth to consider moving into phases four and five and when we feel like that would be feasible and safe and practical for that to happen. So that is the update on the return to school plan. Any questions on that one?
Yes, quick question. If I'm a teacher and I have a student in my class who has a family member that is positive, how are we handling that? Is just that one kid quarantined or everybody in his class or?
Did you wanna jump in, Beth? I can answer it or you can?
Yeah, no, Deja.
Yeah, so it that we ask everybody to report those positive cases for themselves and their immediate contacts to that COVID nursing line. And then the nurses do an interview and they figure out if we've had more than fifteen minutes of contact within that six feet of space and then they make the determination if there are other people that that sit near that student. That's why we're keeping close eyes on seating charts and things like that this year to know if that other students in that class would need to quarantine. So far, it's mostly been if I have a family member and I need to quarantine, it's just been me because we've been able to keep pretty distant and be able to keep kids separate.
Thank you.
Other board member questions? Noah?
No, I just wanted to comment on the um the burden rates and the percent positive rates again, just to have a little insight on those. Um they are trending in the right direction. Unfortunately, we do not have the numbers from last week yet, um which would see if we are, we are actually seeing a trend in decreases. Um there's something nationwide that's going on, which is a little bit of anomaly that we have a a severe reduction in testing that is happening and we're not exactly sure why that is. Um the percent positive rate actually would be expected to go exponentially up if that would continue because then we're only seeing very sick people being tested. So the data from two weeks ago is showing uh the lowest percent positive rate we've seen in many, many months actually for our, for our area. And so that's very encouraging, but um we do have to keep an eye on this because it's not really certain why people aren't being tested. Um it's available and more available now than ever before. Uh we're just fewer people actually being tested. And so that could, we could see some changes in those numbers, um maybe dramatic changes depending if that changes uh as far as how much testing is being done, as well as if those variants that have been uh moving their way across the United States uh start being more prevalent here in our area here. So uh it's, it's good to keep track of. I just wanna put some context to those numbers.
No, that's great. Thank you. You, is it, is the, is the lower rate of testing mostly in like cold weather states right now? Or is it happening nationwide and on the warm weather states as well? You could assume a lot of people aren't gonna leave the house to go get tested, right?
That was one of the theories um that we're seeing less is because people just don't wanna go out in the cold. But there's some things that are required, you know, for going on a plane, you have to get a test. In order to do certain medical procedures, you have to get a test. So there's not seemingly a reduction in those things. Uh I mean, from previously in the pandemic anyways. So it, it's not really certain uh why that is, but like even in um at my position, we have community testing locations and we just don't have people coming in. Um part of that might be that, well, I can get the vaccine and so I'm less concerned about getting that test. That might be one thing. There's a little concern to that though, obviously, because the vaccine is still not widely being distributed. So the hope is that people are not becoming more lax in the, in the concern for being tested and that's why we're seeing fewer people tested because that obviously can uh return to having community spread that's not being undetected. But that percent per top, percent positive rate really will tell you that. If we're over ten percent of our percent positive rate, we, we do have undetected community spread going on. We're under that value right now. Five percent is, is what we wanna get to, so hopefully it continues to go down. Um but uh this is something that is being seen nationwide, so it's not only looked at, not only seen in cold weather states. It's probably more prevalent in cold weather states right now. Um but scientists right now are trying to figure out, why is this happening? Are, why aren't people being tested like they were previously?
And just to add one thing to that, we have been investigating um whether or not we'll be able to do testing at our wellness center as well because we want to encourage people to continue getting tested as we know that that's a very important part of the mitigation strategies is to test if you're exposed or test if you're having symptoms. And so we're trying to make that more accessible to staff and we'll have some more updates on that one soon.
Any other board questions on the return to school?
Okay, um so next on the agenda is the legislative update. And um in the state update this week, we have uh overturning the public health emergency. Uh Board of Education approved a face covering requirement in all school buildings and on school buses. And we further extended that requirement to include when on school grounds. These expectations will not change regardless of any political action in Madison that rescinds the current statewide mask mandate. Um so we just wanted to be sure to remind our um community of learners and our community of families that our mask mandate is continuing and will continue for a long time. And so even if there were some changes across the state, ours in West Alice, West Milwaukee and on our school grounds and in our school buildings and on our school facilities will continue to be in place. Um we also received a letter from uh Dale Cuhina, Wisconsin State Senator from the fifth district and Joe Sanfilippo, Wisconsin State Representative from the fifteenth Assembly District. These senators have written to area districts to strongly recommend a return to entirely in-person learning. Also in the letter is that in the coming weeks, Senator Cuhina will be advocating for and working on adjusting school funding to direct more state dollars to schools that have returned to in-person education. Um on the federal updates, there's a COVID relief package. In January, President-elect Joe Biden, who is now President Joe Biden, called for a one hundred and thirty billion dollars in addition for COVID nineteen relief funding for schools. Ramped up testing efforts and accelerated vaccine distribution strategies to help reopen the majority of K-eight schools within the first one hundred days of his administration. The proposals are part of the one point nine trillion dollar American Rescue Plan that also seeks three hundred and fifty billion in aid to state, local and territorial governments. And then in the United States Education Secretary, President Biden has selected Connecticut Education Commissioner, Dr. Miguel Cardona as his education secretary. Dr. Cardona Jo- Dr. Cardona's journey as an educator started in an elementary classroom in Meridian, Connecticut. According to President Biden, Dr. Cardona has a proven track record as an innovative leader who will fight for all students and for better, fairer, more successful educational system. Cardona is awaiting Senate approval. And that is all that's in the legislative update tonight, so we'll move on to the district recognitions. Um this February is Black History Month. It's February's National Black History Month where we give special focus to contributions of African-Americans to the United States honoring all black people from all periods of US history. From the enslaved people first brought over from Africa in the early seventeenth century to African-Americans living in the United States today, we celebrate the achievements and history of African-Americans in our country. Um this is also, February is also Career and Technical Education Month. So career and technical education prepares students for careers that are the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce, fostering productivity, innovation, entrepreneurship and business and an industry which contributes to America's leadership and the global marketplace. Um and in the recognitions tonight, you will see a list of all of our teachers that work in the area of career and technical education and we are very thankful for them and proud of them. I will not read all of those names tonight, but you can see them in the minutes and as well as in the agenda. It is also, last week was also National Counselor Week, so we wanted to thank and recognize all of our student services staff. So we've included our school psychologists, our school social workers and our counselors for their unique contribution in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. They are deeply committed to our students, families and staff members. And you can also see the full list of that employee group listed as well. Um in Recreation and Community Services, we are pleased to announce that our Recreation and Community Services Department was awarded the Wisconsin Park and Recreation Association's twenty twenty Silver Star Award in youth programming for the Operation Recreation Mobile Recreation Play Program. The WPRA Silver Star Award is selected by a distinguished panel of recreation professionals who have expertise in the field of recreation service delivery. Entries are judged based on five criteria that are essential to having a successful recreation program. Goals and objectives, participation, operation efficiency, creativity and innovation and marketing. This and marketing. This is the department's third Silver Star Award since two thousand eighteen. Special recognition goes to Program Manager Amanda Switchenberg for her leadership and initiative with Operation Recreation Program. We would also like to thank and recognize our amazing Operation Recreation Crew, Becca Bojarski, Casey Farner, Lauren Francis, Jake Kruger, Brittany Madoff, Gabrielle Strasser and Kelly Urbannick. So thank you to them. And that ends our um district recognitions.
There any other updates for item four? Sure, are you aware of?
No.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for uh stepping in this evening and providing all those updates for us. All right, we'll move on to item eight, our board report. Um item one is the review of the board calendar. Um so today is Monday, February eighth, so we have a regular Board of Education meeting. And immediately following, we do have a workshop for na- financial stability and efficiency. And food service updates from Sudexo. Next Monday, February fifteenth at six PM, we have a special board presentation on a petition uh to alter a school district boundary. Immediately following, we will have two workshops, um a financial stability and efficiency on our audit review and a college and career readiness and recreation and community services. So a jointly held committee, um committee which group uh which will be a full-on workshop on facility usage policy development. And then immediately following that, we will have a closed session meeting. On Monday, February twenty-second at six PM, we will have a regular Board of Education meeting. And on Monday, March eighth at six PM, regular Board of Education meeting. And immediately following, Financial Stability and Efficiency Workshop on pupil count, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two enrollment projections, estimated revenue limit calculations and a preliminary budget protection. All right, so that is it for the board calendar. Do any board members have any community updates? One of these weeks, we're gonna have something fun to share with everybody. Comment, I know it's coming. All right, to move on to the next item on the board report, which is an update on the WASB resolution. Um the uh WASB had their convention a few weeks ago. Uh Jeff and I did take team the resolution portion of the, of the statewide convention. Uh Jeff, did you have any commentary on the resolutions that you were present for? Just muted though. You're muted. Now you are.
I could talk slower and you could read my. The WASB Delegate Assembly met virtually to review ten resolutions on January twentieth. Ultimately, the delegates approved all ten with some amendments. Resolution twenty-one oh one, we all have copies of these, had language added to the end referencing supermajority votes of the legislature and regulus, resolution twenty-one oh nine had language removed at the end which referenced what charges can be brought against individuals who can convey unspecified threats to schools. See, uh you can see the uh their website for more uh information on that. And just, I guess if people aren't aware, the WASB positions on policy issues are generally decided by the Delegate Assembly, which is comprised of one representative from each member school and the CISA Board of Control. The Delegate Assembly meets annually at the time of the WASB, WASD, WASBO convention in January. Resolutions are due by September fifteenth for the following January. Hmm that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Other than the fact that because it was virtual, we're supposed to start at one thirty, didn't start until five after two. People were having a hard time logging on and it's hard to sit for thirty-five minutes doing nothing virtually.
I, I agree. You, at this time of the year, most of us are pretty well versed in on the online technology. It was a little frustrating to, to see that. I did jump in, um definitely said Jeff and I did take team the resolutions. And so Jeff was present for front part and I was present for the back part. We did vote according to the wishes of the school district and the school board. So as we discussed in, at the board meeting, how the board favored votes is how Jeff and I cast our vote for each of the um resolutions. As the resolutions changed and were amended, if they altered the meaning of the resolution in its original form as we had agreed upon as a board, then those resolutions were voted down by us um because they all, they were not what our board had approved for um on the resolution. Um so the copy of the approved resolution was attached in board book. Um so you do have those available if there's any questions. Uh we can take this now or Jeff and I can answer those offline. Gary? That the one with regards to the mascot? Yeah, that was a very long conversation.
I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear Gary at all.
I didn't hear Gary either.
Here, you want me to re- repeat your question?
I'm hearing nothing.
I can hear you. It's really quiet, Gary.
Gary's question is about uh uh number ten, resolution which is about the mascot and whether or not it was going to be a request for statewide legislation as opposed to at the local level. Um and that, that one did go on for some time. It was a lot of back and forth similar to the discussion in the year prior. Um ultimately, the resolution did pass with local approval. There was lots of interest at a statewide level, but there was also a lot of discussion that at minimum, they wanted the district-wide resolution passed, which is what ultimately passed um during convention. Um with the interest of many of the participating districts that this become a statewide push. In order to gain traction, we felt that the local approval was the first step before they could push that to a statewide request. So at this moment, uh the local uh resolution language is what had passed. Thank you for asking. Um okay, we will move on then to our board committee reports. Um we have two this evening. Our first one is college and career readiness. Um it's your Eustreck.
Hello. Um so we will be going over tomorrow, um the two thousand series Neola policies that we may have any questions on with a first read. Uh and then next week, Tuesday, we will be going over the five thousand series. Um and then uh with the workshop on Monday with the Recreation Department, um you know, what I think we are trying to accomplish is um uh how we align our, how we view our athletic and extracurricular participation and opportunities with declining enrollment um and declining participation nationwide. Uh it is extremely alarming the amount of uh declining participation in disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged families. And our district has roughly about sixty percent of our students come from economically disadvantaged families. So uh I think the goal is to discuss from a career and college readiness perspective and equity perspective, the opportunities and the support we are providing uh for those students, for all our students. But um you know, how, how do we drive more participation through the rec department, through our schools, aligning the athletic directors and, and starting those conversations? So I'm pretty excited about that.
Great, thank you. Anything else for the committee report? Good, but thank you.
That's good.
Um our other committee report this evening is Financial Stability and Efficiency. Mr. Lee? And Caitlin?
Yes, um we will be discussing at our next meeting the Neola policies as well. Um as well as going over the um twenty twenty-one budget review uh that, which is now starting out for uh what we have to go through. So um I believe, I don't think, we don't have it on the calendar yet, Caitlin, do we, the next meeting?
Nope, not yet, but we always meet the second board meeting of the month at five PM. So there, uh there will be a Zoom and a note, agenda notice coming out for that one shortly.
Yes. That is all.
Great, thank you. And thank you to all the committees for the work on the Neola policies. I would say we talked about this in the last meeting and probably the meeting before that, what a undertaking this is. So thank you to everyone who has submitted their feedback on the policies for the individual thousand series levels and the committees for the intense review that you are doing and are both continuing to do over the next couple of weeks. Um so that when it comes forward for the board for review and approval at, um the diligence has been made and that we are all comfortable with the adoption of those policies as they are. So thank you to everybody for your work on that. I know this is no small undertaking. All right, those were the committee updates for this evening, so we will then move on to our consent agenda. There are three items. Item nine point one, the approval of minutes from the January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one meeting, employment summary and a supplementary contract. Does anyone need anything separated? Now we look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any additional comments or questions?
I did have a question. So um looking at the summary for fi- uh for the employment, we are losing um some cleaners. And I just wanna make sure because it's such a critical portion of ensuring that we keep our buildings uh open, that we have other people in line for those positions or plan to make sure that when vacancies like this do occur in this time where we have people in building, that we have something ongoing still to ensure we're not losing that um cleaning that's happening at these different facilities.
Yep, we do have sub cleaners, so they step in and pick up additional hours when somebody. So, they step in and pick up additional hours when somebody is quarantined or in this case resigns. So, that's what we have going on right now and those positions are posted.
Okay, great. So, we're not missing cleaning because of that or teachers are having to pick it up?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We've had a motion and a second. Any final questions or comments? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, both have. Thank you very much. All right, we will then move on to our workshop for this evening. Item 10.1 from financial stability and efficiency, our food service update.
All right, good evening. And Steve Kozner is joining us tonight. So, he's just going to walk us through a brief update on all the really awesome things that food service has been able to do over the last few months. And with really the goal of being to provide the most meals to the most families as possible. So, I'm going to share my screen and Steve is going to walk us through it.
Okay, hi, everyone. Go to the next slide there, Caitlin.
Well, let me just, no, this picture is pre-COVID, which I feel like everything needs a disclaimer these days.
Oh. All right, so tonight I just want to kind of go through a little presentation here of the kind of things that we've been doing and adapted to since we, of course, changed to our COVID distribution of meals, our fall reentry program, give you little statistics, kind of year-to-date, comparing last year to this year on how we're sitting with our meals that we've distributed. Couple of things we've done outside the kitchens along with a brief facilities update and then a little employee spotlight that I'd like to share with everyone. So, this next slide, gosh, it seems like forever since mid-March that we've started with the distribution of meals, something that we've never done before. Have learned through some experiences that we had to continue to adapt and to reach out to more people. But when we started in March, we had our eight locations and we actually partnered with a few of the educational assistants that helped us at a few pop-up sites. I was using about 20 of my staff members out of about 75 of my employees. The year-to-date number you see on here is from mid-March until the end of December. Currently, with the January numbers in there, we're probably just over 400,000 meals that we've distributed since we started this. And we're currently at eight meal sites. So, phase one, this is starting with September. We, in the summer months, it was a little bit slower, but we opened up two additional sites in Madison and Wilson Elementary Schools. With our nine-to-eleven distribution, we quickly found that we needed to reach out to more of the early starters in the morning. So, we opened up an early distribution site at Daiki as well as a four-to-six p.m. distribution as well. And then in mid-September, we were allowed, we started offering a weekend meal pickup as well so we can give all our students access to seven days of food. Our phase two, which I'm very happy to say that we're in and so are my staff, we are wrapping, cupping any food that we are distributing to the students. We are not using any of the garden bars. So, we are actually putting the meals pre-bagging just for speed of service. So, we're putting the fruit and vegetable, they're wrapped silverware within the bags. We are currently giving two meal choices to our elementary students and seven meal choices to our secondaries. Each school has come up with a pretty good plan on how they're doing their distribution and where the kids are eating. It's after our one, one week plus one day on getting feedback from the principals, it's, it's almost going too well from a distribution standpoint because with the simplification in our summer feeding contract, we don't need the student names or PIN numbers. So, it's a real quick grab and go. And when things do get back to normal, I've already warned the principals that the, that the lines aren't going to be moving quite as fast as they are now, but it's going pretty slick. With my staff, in addition to their normal food safety training, we have an emphasis, of course, on their personal hygiene, the personal protective equipment as far as mask-wearing, changing gloves, changing them often, cleaning contact surfaces, touch points, cleaning, disinfecting their kitchens throughout their day. Accepting delivery is something, you know, ensuring that our delivery drivers are following all the procedures and being compliant with district policies, as well as food storage. And one of the big things, and especially in the secondary schools where we have multiple employees, is called working in a six-foot kitchen. I want to keep my employees safe as well. So, adapting to different workstations so they are keeping separated throughout the day. So, this next slide here on the top, starting with, of course, September here. If this is just a year-over-year comparison, red, of course, is 2019. So, with all our meals last year, we were just about 150,000. This September, we're at about 38,000. So, that's about 25% of the meals that, that we serve compared to last year. Through, as you can see, continues through the graph here with the addition of adding some different times of distribution and especially that, that weekend meals that we're offering. December, we actually climbed up to, we're serving now just over 50% of what we did from, from December, December from last year. So, we're definitely reaching, reaching more of the students and kids in West Dallas. The bottom graph is just, again, kind of a entire pandemic from mid-March through, through December. You can kind of see our meals that we're currently doing. So, we're climbing back up to try to reach as many students as we can. Keep a couple of things outside the kitchens. We were involved in the Nathan Hale trick-or-treat back in October on an extremely windy day. As I was telling Caitlin, I had to put this slide up because this was my first endeavor into crafting and going into a Hobby Lobby to make my little decorations that was given a two-day notice. So, but I have to say, when the kids and the parents came up to our table, I had a lot of appreciative parents and thanking us for the meal program, which was very nice to hear. And our next slide here, of course, we're also coordinated with the Recreation Department for the target event. We put together over 775 cootie bags for the kids. And this bottom picture here was, was really special because we had a parent that reached out to me just before Thanksgiving and he asked me how many employees I have working. And he treated them all to coffee and donuts on our Wednesday distribution right before Thanksgiving. And my staff was very appreciative of that. And then a quick facilities update. In addition to our normal scope of work, just to help out in the district. And we were doing some exterior work as far as removing debris on the outside exterior of the buildings. All the indoor bleachers were cleaned and disaffected that my staff actually was out in the outdoor complex doing the same and at the outdoor stadium with an addition of extra floor scrubbing and waxing. And again, outside with some exterior glass cleaning. Want to show, bring up Larry Pearson here. He's been with me actually the entire time that we've had the cleaning contract in the, in the district. And I get a lot of compliments on Larry. So, I just wanted to showcase him a little bit. And just from a couple of months ago with the, the camps over at Frank Lloyd Wright, I had two different staff members from the Recreation Department reach out to me saying what a great asset Larry was there and has taken the time and bonded with some of the students and some that were struggling and kind of took them under their wing and put them down the right path. And that was just really neat, neat to hear, that time to tell me. So, I just wanted to, to recognize Larry for his contributions here. And then finally, Vicki here is on my food service side. She's my supervisor over at Lane Intermediate School. She's been with me for over five years. Vicki is very passionate about feeding as many students breakfast and lunch. She'll, if she could, she would drag them into the cafeteria. And I kind of like that because I want to get as many meals as we can. But in addition to doing a great job during the day, Vicki has taken the time on her own and she is quite involved over at Lane. So, she's very much part of the team there where she was asked and she is a PBIS mentor. She's part of their Hope Squad. Her and another teacher are, we have a cooking club on Wednesday. Last year, we had over 20 students. So, every Wednesday, her and the other teacher would be with the students in the cooking club. And as well, she's got her certification through the mental health training. So, she's just another set of eyes and a helpful, helpful person to the Lane community. And she does a great job. So, I wanted to kind of spotlight her tonight as well. And that's my quick update for this evening.
So, just wanted to commend Steve Kozner and his whole SEDEXO team for just being so innovative and creative and being able to turn on a dime, being flexible throughout the last 10 months and just keep providing healthy meals to our families even though it looks completely different. And we just really appreciate the SEDEXO team.
Thank you.
Thank you, because my cursor disappears and then I can't click on anything. Okay.
It's Monday. Any questions for Steve or Caitlin?
I just have one question for Steve. When I heard that you were doing the workshop tonight, I was a little frustrated that you didn't wait until we were back having face-to-face meetings as a board. Because usually when you come and do a workshop, it comes with this delicious dinner and we all make comments about how this is not how we ate when we were in school in cafeterias. So, I would just like to extend the invitation for you to come back once we are back to meeting in person.
Yeah.
So, we can all enjoy that time together.
Well, we're really good at drive, drive-up service now too. So, there's another option for you. It's been interesting, it was something, you know, we've never done this before and we've had a few struggles here and there and tried and learned from them and moved on and gotten things better. You know, it took me a little while to figure out, you know, why, why should we be serving half pints and taking a ton of those homeless go to half gallons? Parents, parents enjoyed that. And so, we, little, little blips on the road here and there, but as soon as we hear about them, we correct them and hopefully they don't, they don't happen again. So.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. I figured it out. Operator error. It, this I think might be more for Caitlin. If there's any budgetary impact to the reduction in meals being served?
Yes, Steve actually probably can speak to that pretty readily. Yes, so we have been receiving, we get less revenue when we have fewer meals. So, yes, that is, has been a slight impact to our Fund 50.
I can wood, we're pretty darn close to our guarantee though for this school year. So, we're pretty darn close to being on track.
And just as a reminder, we had a very healthy fund balance in Fund 50 as well. And so, the impact would not be felt quite as heavily if we do have one in ours.
Staff is very appreciative of the work that was done over the summer and fall with the coolers and freezers that were put in. It was so needed at Hale. And it's really helping now with these distribution as well too because we literally doubled our space at Hale and it's a godsend. So, we're very appreciative of that, so.
Noah?
I want to echo Caitlin's sentiments as well. You know, food distribution was one of the main concerns that we had during this timeframe. You know, so many students are dependent upon the school district for meals, unfortunately. And so, when you are having virtual-only instruction, it becomes a big concern. So, I do appreciate your, you and your staff's ability to be flexible, to open up times that are working for our families as much as possible to allow as many meals as possible to be distributed to them so that hopefully we can reduce how many hungry kids as possible in our district. Along those lines, I know that we weren't really, or I don't believe that we were tracking. You know, we know kind of the families that qualify for that, that reduce, free and reduced lunches already. Do we have any idea how many who were in that pool who didn't get meals? Do we have any people reaching out to the district saying, you know, I just don't have a way of getting to get to where these meal distributions are? I know we have a lot of families that are in Milwaukee and the distance might become a problem for them. And so, any information about that that could be shared?
I don't honestly, you know, with the drive-up, there's, there's no documentation needed. So, it's really hard to say, you know, exactly specifically what segments we're reaching or not. I know we started a few weeks ago, actually, Kristin and I were at Hoover. So, we are now, she didn't realize they could come pick up meals. So, we've been actually every Wednesday giving Kristin over 40 seven-day meal packs. And she's actually bringing him over to Morgan Grove. So, now we're reaching those students as well, so.
And Noah, just to follow up on that, our Student Services team also follows up with any of those families. They're usually the first ones that get that call that a family's in need. And so, we have some of them who diligently drop off food or send home food for the weekends and did a couple of food drives around the holidays especially to make sure that people had food in their homes. So, we are getting some of those calls. It's been far fewer than we would have thought this year because of all the work SEDEXO has done. And so, it's been such a nice partnership. And I echo the sentiments about being thankful to Steve and the team.
Okay, thank you. This is by no means a criticism at all. I just wanted to ensure that, you know, sometimes people fall through the cracks and I just wanted to know if there was, how much of that we were seeing considering the timeframe we were looking at for, for virtual instruction. So, so thank you again very much for the work you and your team do, Steve.
Thank you.
Christine?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment, kind of addressing what Noah was touching upon about people falling through the cracks. This is food distribution for any, any family in our district. They don't need to be attending our schools. They are eligible to participate in the food program no matter where their children are attending.
Right, anyone 18 and under will feed them.
Any other comments? All right, well, Steve, thank you to you and your team from all of us. We're all very appreciative of the work you all do to take care of our families and our learners and our staff. But thank you very much for that, for work year in, year out, that you and your group continue.
Thank you.
Every year, it's a new high bar. So, thank you very much for, for that. If there aren't any other questions or comments, look for a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Hey Caitlin, can you stick around afterwards just for one sec?
Maybe, I would want to be a second?
Action.
Second, thank you. Moving seconded, any additional comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Great, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Stay warm.